We'll call it order tonight's Committee of the Whole for the Auburn City Council meeting for September the 5th, 2023. The City Council should have the minutes from the August 15th, Committee of the Whole. Any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a move to approve?
Second.
Have a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In the minutes from August 15th, carried forth. Lee County Youth Development Center, Mayor pro temp, Whitten.
Yes, sir. There's one vacancy term begins October 1, 2023, and then September 30, 2027. We have an incumbent, Tracy Roberts, who served one partial term, and I would like to nominate Tracy Roberts for a full term.
Second. We have a motion in second for Ms. Tracy Roberts. Any discussion or questions?
I just got one question. Okay, Tracy Roberts, she has served a term. I was just wondering, did you get in, was there any other applicants?
She was the only applicant.
Okay.
Yes. And she served a partial term, and this is a seat that has historically been held by the spouse of the AU president.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and we'll confirm this later on in the agenda. Questions on tonight's agenda for the City Manager? Anyone have any questions from the dials?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do.
Please.
I would like to propose that we reverse the order of 8E7 and 8E8. Number 7 is contingent on 8 being approved, and I don't see any reason to take them out of order.
Mayor, if I may, if the reason, the reason for that order is if AE8 is approved and you don't approve AE7, that is costing the city $100,000. So they were put in that order for succinct legal reasons to have you adopt one before the other. If you don't adopt, if you don't adopt 88 and you've adopted 7, 7 becomes null and void. So that was the succinct legal reason why I put them in that order.
I don't understand. Would you say that again?
So the Creekwood Development Homeowners Association Development Agreement is dependent on you passing the one with Herring Development.
Right.
The Herring Development one, if you just pass that one and pass it first and don't pass the Creekwood one, it would cost the city $100,000 in additional funds because we would be obligated to the Herring Development one.
Well, we have to vote on the Herring Development one, yes or no. And then we have, if we vote no, we don't even need to consider 7. Is that right?
7 becomes null and void automatically, so I put them in an order to protect the general fund as best I could. Yeah, the answer being if...
There's a clause in the Creekwood agreement that does say what Meghan's saying, that if we don't pass the next one, it would be...
Void.
It would be void.
Section 1, item C, is that what you're reading from?
Yes. I would think there's, there's, there's not a clause in the, in the other one, so if we did pass that, then...
Then the city is obligated to up to $165,000, no matter what, whereas if you pass the Creekwood one first, if you're going to do that, then you have Creekwood HOA on the hook for 100,000 of the 165,000. That's why they're in that order.
Any other comments or questions regarding Mr. Griswold's? Okay. So this is not an official...
You don't have to roll a call, but you need to do...
We don't have to roll a call.
Eyes or nays or whatever, just to make sure we can count. You want to change the order of the agenda.
Sure. So is everybody good with the order, the agenda, remain the same?
Let me just ask a question then. So you're saying that, okay, if we vote, just say the council vote yes on number 7, what does that do to 8?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Okay, so then we go back and we vote no for 8?
Then it nullifies 7. 7 goes away. Because 8 is contingent on you passing 7, and that being fully executed.
So by this being on the consent agenda...
It will likely be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
I fully expect both items to be removed, Ms. Taylor.
And just due to the dollar amount, that's why they remain on the consent agenda, as development agreements typically do, unless they exceed $250,000 of city funds, and then they would be on the regular resolutions.
Any other questions or comments? All right, is everybody on the council okay with it remaining the order that is in? Okay, everybody on this side, okay? Okay, that's the majority.
Lindsay, just let the record note, it's a majority, not a straight vote count. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the council? All right, Ms. Crouch, anything for us?
No, I have nothing, Mayor.
Okay. Is there a move to adjourn the Committee of the Whole?
Remove.
Second. We adjourn the Committee of the Whole, and at this time, we'll open up the regular City Council meeting for September the 5th, 2023. Certainly want to welcome everybody that has joined us in person here tonight, and those that are listening on the radio and that are watching through YouTube and Facebook. Welcome everyone. Roll a call. Lindsay?
Adams.
Here.
Goblins.
Yes.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Whitten.
Here.
Anders.
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. This is the first meeting of the month, so we'll begin with our employee recognition video.
We're pleased today to recognize and introduce you to our September Employee of the Month, and I have a memorandum here for John Horr, our Inspection Services Director, building official, Rhonda Scott Cummins, our Executive Director of Development Services. I am pleased to nominate Jim Taylor for the Employee of the Month Award in recognition of his outstanding contributions and dedication to his role as building inspector. With an impressive tenure of over 18 years in the Inspection Services Department, Jim has consistently demonstrated qualities that embody our organization's core values and mission. Throughout his career, he has consistently provided thorough inspections, ensuring that all projects meet the required standards and regulations. His meticulous attention to detail has contributed significantly to maintaining the safety and integrity of buildings within our city. Jim's keen ability to understand complex building construction techniques has proven invaluable in his role. He continually engages in opportunities to deepen his understanding of codes, whether participating in training, independent research, or serving on an International Code Council Committee. Jim has shown a solid dedication to his job by taking the knowledge he gains and offering training and education to contractors, owners, and fellow staff members. His efforts in sharing his knowledge and expertise has significantly enhanced the overall understanding of building codes and continually improves the quality of work in our organization. In addition to his dedication, Jim upholds strong ethical standards in all aspects of his work. He consistently demonstrates fairness, impartiality, and honesty in his interactions. It is without reservation that I recommend Jim Taylor for the Employee of the Month Award. Recognizing his contributions through this award would acknowledge his outstanding performance and inspire others to emulate his exemplary qualities. Thank you, Jim. Congratulations.
Again, thank you and congratulations to all of our employees for doing such great work. On behalf of the citizens of Auburn, we think and congratulate Jim Taylor on being our Employee of the Month. During the Committee of the Whole, the City Council unanimously reappointed Ms. Tracy Roberts to the Lee County Youth Development Center, and we appreciate her enthusiastic willingness to serve with Laura Cooper and her outstanding staff at Lee County Youth Development. Under questions on the agenda, there was a request to exchange the order of items, let's see, that would be 8, 8E7 and 8, and ultimately, the council, after discussion, decided not to do that. Under Mayor's announcements tonight, I want to say thank you to President and Mrs. Roberts for hosting dinners that recognize the efforts and the bravery of our public safety officials. That's very kind of them. Dr. Goode started that tradition years ago, and Dr. Roberts has continued it forth, and we appreciate him doing that. Speaking of our public safety officials, next Monday is 9/11, and St. Michael's Catholic Church will be hosting a blue mass again in honor of our public safety officials. And East Alabama Hospital is also hosting an event in a memory time for our officials on Monday afternoon, and those things are open for our council and certainly open to the public. I want to thank the Auburn Chamber of Commerce for hosting the blessing on the corner last Friday morning. It was wonderful to gather, together with people from our community at Tumors Corner and asked for the Lord's blessings over our city in this coming year. The College of Ag had their 150th anniversary birthday recently, and I appreciate Paul Patterson and his staff inviting me to that, and that is a great organization, a great college that really is at the heart of what Auburn University's history is all about. So thank you for inviting me, and all the best in the future to the College of Ag. This coming Saturday is Benjamin's Bone Marrow Blitz, and it'll sit Town Creek, and you can run 10K or run a 5K, or there is a, I believe, a walk you can participate in. This is to raise money for bone marrow and to raise awareness for pediatric cancer. A member of our tourism staff, Cat Bobo's son, Benjamin, has been fighting a form of leukemia since, really, he was born, and he is Benjamin. So Benjamin is doing well and at home, and we appreciate their raising, wanting to raise awareness to this cause. And so if you need some exercise on Saturday morning and you want to contribute to a great cause, I encourage you to go to Town Creek and participate. And also want to congratulate two businesses in our town, Rhapsody and Lily Jane, who have been recognized by the Alabama Retail Association as being outstanding businesses, and they'll be recognized here locally this coming Friday, but thank them for being unique businesses that are unique to Auburn. I know Rhapsody has a couple other locations, but we appreciate all they do for our community. Anybody else in the council have an announcement they'd like to make tonight? Okay, we'll move forward with Auburn University Communications.
Good afternoon, y'all. It's been a great few weeks back on the plains for Auburn's student body. We're starting to get back in the swing of things. Nothing says back into the swing of things like the return of Auburn football. Had a huge win this weekend. Over 88,000 people in attendance, which is an all-time record for Jordan-Hare, which is always big. On top of that, we got Tumors Corner being rolled back in full force. Always excited. Had Hugh Freeze out there with the whole student body and the Auburn family, which is something that was really excited. On top of that, I mean, we, okay, another news, pardon me. Catherine Sierra, a food science grad student from Honduras, won third place at the Auburn University 2023 Research Symposium. She became fluent in English only two years ago, coming here for an internship. She now works in the grad program studying plasma and, pardon me, y'all. Okay, I apologize, y'all. She continues her studies using plasma to combat bacteria, which I really don't understand how that works, but, I mean, good for her, obviously, and moving here. I mean, personally, for me, I'm taking elementary Spanish 1. I'm learning, like, colors. I have a test on colors Friday, and I don't know what I'm doing, and it's going to be a struggle for me. But for her to be coming here, doing full-out presentations on, like, complicated science is something that I really wanted to highlight. In other words, a lot of the student body has been really happy with the sidewalk and crosswalk adjustments around town. That's something that we can discuss more on Friday, but that's all for me. War Eagle.
War Eagle, thank you. At this time, as citizens, communications on items on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak to the City Council about anything on our agenda tonight, would ask that you come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes. Looking at our agenda tonight, there are no public hearings, so if you'd like to address the City Council, now is the time to do that. Yes, sir?
Good evening. I'm Mike Goodlett. I live at 1766 Creekwood Trail, and I address you both as an individual and as president of the Creekwood Development Homeowners Association. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of the Bridlewood Drive proposal. Bridlewood Drive was created in 1992 by the city as a private road, which is essentially our only access to our development. Let me read you how this was created in 1992. Quote, "Subject to the condition that the road will be maintained by the Owners' Association, and if it is not, city services will be withdrawn. Thus, we maintain the road." Since 2009, we've spent over $43,000 maintaining the road, and it's 25 feet wide. It's essentially one lane. It's broken pavement, but the most dangerous part of the road is it contains a culvert that on the north side drops off about 15 feet, and it's our fear that someone that's not used to traveling this, this road will inadvertently go off, go off the culvert. For 25 years, I pounded asphalt into our lane because rainstorms, every time we construct a house, the pavement deteriorates. The pavement has no base. It is essentially a thin layer of asphalt on red clay. The Creekwood Development Homeowners Association met June 29 and passed the proposal to fund the 100, the proposed $100,000 loan from the city to bring Bridlewood Drive up to city standards and correct the dangerous culvert, hopefully. I'm thankful that this innovative and collaborative solution to this longstanding situation is before you, and I urge you to vote favorably for this proposal, and thanks to each of you for your service. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Who'll be next? Okay, we'll move ahead with the City Manager's communications.
Mayor, do not have any City Manager's communications this evening, so our first item of business is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Need to remove 8E7 and 8.
7 and 8, okay. Anyone else?
8E3, please.
3.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
May I remove 8 Charlie?
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, well, we start with 8C.
I'm sorry, it was 8C. You said 8E3. Correct, Councilman Griswold?
Yes, please.
I circled the wrong thing. All right. Item 8C, ratifies and concurs with the action of the Industrial Development Board to sell approximately 5.61 acres of property located at 1571 West Sanford Avenue to Obix LLC in the amount of $175,000.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Mr. Griswold?
This was...
Oh, excuse me.
Mormon.
Sunny, I apologize. Excuse me. Mr. Mormon?
Our friends at Obix are doing well, and we're proud for them and their success, and grateful for the, for their investment, and we're excited about the expansion. In fact, I've seen it. They, about, I guess, when they first got here, a couple of us went over and saw this. It's a great, great facility. Am I correct that this latest expansion began about two years ago with an agreement for a prepaid lease, and now Obix is buying the property outright?
It is. It's ratifying a previous action, so in this case, you know, you asked a question about not buying property previously. This property was initially and originally zone Comprehensive Development District, which required a sale of property because this wasn't a direct industrial use. It is related thereof. So this is ratifying an action of an agreed-upon price for the property, and they need to transact a mortgage. Mr. Dunlap, is that correct?
Absolutely.
And so they, they need this step done to get a concurring resolution to finalize the transaction, but not really an expansion per se. It's just a continued ramp-up of their initial investment plan.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries. Okay, 8E7.
Item 8E7 authorizes an agreement with the Creekwood Development Homeowners Association that commits the HOA to $100,000 contribution as partial payment toward the extension of Bridlewood Drive over a maximum of an 11-year period.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Mr. Griswold?
This was...
Oh, excuse me.
Mormon.
Sunny, I apologize. Excuse me. Mr. Mormon?
Our friends at Obix are doing well, and we're proud for them and their success, and grateful for the, for their investment, and we're excited about the expansion. In fact, I've seen it. They, about, I guess, when they first got here, a couple of us went over and saw this. It's a great, great facility. Am I correct that this latest expansion began about two years ago with an agreement for a prepaid lease, and now Obix is buying the property outright?
It is. It's ratifying a previous action, so in this case, you know, you asked a question about not buying property previously. This property was initially and originally zone Comprehensive Development District, which required a sale of property because this wasn't a direct industrial use. It is related thereof. So this is ratifying an action of an agreed-upon price for the property, and they need to transact a mortgage. Mr. Dunlap, is that correct?
Absolutely.
And so they, they need this step done to get a concurring resolution to finalize the transaction, but not really an expansion per se. It's just a continued ramp-up of their initial investment plan.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Okay.
All right.
8E3.
8E3. All right, hold on just a second, get there. 8E3 authorizes a professional services agreement with Forsight Group LLC for design and construction phase services for Ann Pearson Park in the amount of $218,200.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Mr. Griswold?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I certainly approve, support this, but I think it's an opportunity for us to educate the public on what this is all about. There's been a little bit of stuff in the press about it. Unfortunately, the council as a whole, we didn't hear about it at all until the, the budget summary we had last week's budget meeting. So I'd appreciate a quick summary of this for the benefit of the public.
Sure.
Yeah, there is some property on Shelton Mill Road that is currently owned by the Auburn Real Estate, Auburn University Real Estate Foundation, Incorporated, that was part of the original Noble Hall Ann Pearson estate. That property falls under a land trust of, of Alabama Georgia Land Trust, where they have some conservation rights over it. Something Dr. Pearson did in the early 2000s sometime ago. A donor has stepped in and actually kind of transacted in a way, and we'll, we'll reveal that donor when they choose to be revealed with the Auburn University Real Estate Foundation to kind of help transact all this property. And the city was approached to say, hey, would you like to put a passive park on over 40 acres of property that you can use? At, for, right now, the nominal fee is $10 a year. I cannot, the lease is not final, so I have to caution to our media friends. When you say $10 a year, that is subject to change. We're not, we're not done negotiating, and right now, the legal timeframe is 30 years, but that could, could increase. And so we have the ability to spend a little over $2 million, $2 to $2.5 million to put a passive park. It'll include walking trails, a small playground, restrooms, parking, and some pavilions, a small and a large pavilion, and it all meets Alabama Georgia Land Trust parameters. So the city is looking to serve an area of town where we have no existing parks and no hope of acquiring property at a reasonable cost for the hope of being able to lease property at $10 a year. We'll spend money on some improvements. And our only major restriction out there is this is a passive recreation facility as opposed to active. So there is, if you drive by the property now, you'll see a cleared area and kind of like a little feed barn there. That area that you see cleared is kind of the same on our plan. It will be an open area, and yeah, you can go out there, as I said at the budget hearing, and play football, you know, throwing around with a family pickup game or what have you, but we can't have organized play out there. Teams cannot reserve it for practices and things like that. This is meant to be mostly a passive recreation facility, but we're deeply grateful to the Real Estate Foundation and the donor who will be named, who helped facilitate transactionally this happening for the AU Foundation beyond Ann Pearson. And the only other request was that this be named, Ann Pearson Park. There eventually will be a disc golf there if, if the council agrees in a second phase in the future. It's a several hundred thousand dollar undertaking, and we just didn't feel it necessary in this phase.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I, I just want to ask a question. Would this park be treated like the other parks, there'll be a fee in order to, is it, well, people can't actually rent it, or is it just open?
In terms of the use of the pavilion and so on, I will have to check with the Land Trust about our ability. I need to, to take a deep dive into the lease as to whether or not we're even allowed, and that's one of the questions our attorneys has, our attorneys have back to their attorneys, is whether or not we can even charge a fee out here because of the parameters of the Land Trust. So we're still working through those details that, that, yeah, I'm sorry, I can't answer that tonight, but you will see, the lease has to be approved by the City Council, and if we, where this is designed, but when we bid construction and award construction, you'll have to approve that as well. So you'll see all of these documents, and we'll be sure we have those questions answered. Thank you.
Ms. Crouch, the Land Trust had to approve the design and the use of it, and, I mean, they stayed involved...
Yeah, they have to make a final approval, but they've made a preliminary approval based on our preliminary design, but we haven't gotten to the use questions that Ms. Taylor has.
Sure. Okay, any other questions? All right, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. 8E7.
Item 8E7 authorizes an agreement with the Creekwood Development Homeowners Association that commits the HOA to $100,000 contribution as partial payment toward the extension of Bridlewood Drive over a maximum of an 11-year period.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Who asked for this? Did we pull it off? Yes, has very much the potential for bad precedent in the future. I think that it is inappropriate whatsoever for the city to put money towards a private road. The other thing, you know, basically, we have an affluent community, which I'm glad they're there, an affluent developer, I'm glad they're investing, but why in the world a city would be putting money towards this, I just don't know. If the developer and the HOA want to have a separate agreement between the two of them to jointly fund this road, I'm all for that. That's where it belongs, not in, not coming out of the city funds. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
May I?
Please.
So this is in Ward 3. I've been working with the Creekwood HOA. This has been a concern of theirs and was brought to me in 2021, which they have been dealing with since 1992. Yes, and at that time, when they asked if there was anything that we could do to help them as a city, the answer was no, because at that time, it was still in the county. And because of the development that is being, going in at Rock House Farms, which is off of Bridlewood, that is what has triggered the need for the city to be a part of this. And in 1992, the city is what created the situation. And in the minutes from the 1992 Auburn Planning Commission of January 9th, Dr. McCord stated that what Mr. Rogers has done is bought a piece of property that is landlocked, with the exception of the fact that there is a recorded easement. The commission is proposing to allow the development of a road with a more narrow right-of-way than they normally require in order to accommodate the fact that he has bought and intends to develop a piece of property that is virtually landlocked, with the exception of that easement. So in 1992, the city made a decision to allow this to happen, and I do not believe that the city today would allow that to happen. And so it is a private road today, but when this development takes place at Rock House Farms and becomes a part of the city, then that road, the intention of that road is to create a city-maintained road because it will be built to city standards. And I think this is a great solution to solve a problem that we, as a city, allowed to happen 30-something years ago. And I believe that the burden of the Creekwood HOA has been such that they have been responsible for the liability of anyone that transverses, trans, they go up and down the road. Thank you. My brain is in overdrive right now. And so for Mr. Griswold to state that we are funding a private road, we are not. We are, in essence, ensuring that this road can be brought up to city standards, and then therefore, once it has and is, it will become a city road.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Mr. Mormon?
I would like to say something, too.
Okay.
When I look at this, and I see, and I also heard the gentleman say that it was a private road, and so I do know that there's been some issues that has come even in my ward where private roads cannot be, the city cannot fund private roads. So I don't see, but there were an exception, according to you, there was an exception, if it's, if that development is trying to build affordable housing. Okay? So with that being said, I just don't agree that we should pick and choose who roads to, when they're private, pick and choose the roads that we should assist with and those that we should not assist with. So I don't agree with this because, you know, as a councilperson, as an elected official, I just don't want the public to think that I'm picking and choosing between developments, okay, as to who can do what and who cannot do what when it comes down to development. And with that being said, there's going to be some issues tonight that come up later on on the agenda, well, during citizen communication. And I want to bring this up because this is basically what these people in Webster Crossing have been asking also about private, about them having the city to assist that owner with paving the roads from Webster Crossing. And my understanding is because it's a private road, that just cannot happen. So, you know, just picking and choosing with developers, I'm just not feeling that.
Sunny, I believe you had your hand raised. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The regulations of the City of Auburn require a developer to provide an adequate road to benefit a new subdivision. This developer has agreed to do that. In addition, the developer was originally asked to provide an improved road to an established neighboring subdivision. That didn't seem fair to me. This proposed agreement seeks to facilitate a solution to which all parties can agree to. The city will receive a road in good repair with the majority of the cost borne by the developer and the HOA of the neighboring subdivision. To resolve this 30-year-old issue, the city has agreed to bear improvements up to $65,000, which is less than the original $100,000 that was anticipated. I am grateful to Councilman, Councilwoman Witten and to the city staff for their efforts in putting together this resolution, and I support it and its companion resolution fully.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I'm of the mind of Councilman Taylor and Councilman Griswold on this issue. Most people who buy property do their due diligence, and I'm sure that the property owners at Creekwood weighed up the implications of buying a piece of property and also knew that the fact that the drive was going to be something that they would bear the responsibility of, and they've existed to this point, you know, albeit with probably some difficulties, but I'm not sure that this, that it's the city's role to act as some kind of contributor to what essentially, it will be a public road, but 99% of the citizens of this city will never drive on it. So I can't support this precedent-breaking issue before us.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Anyone else have anything they'd like to say?
I have a question. This road, once it's completed, will become a city street.
That's correct.
Why was it, why did it not become a city street back years ago when it was first developed?
It's a very, you know, lengthy story, and you've heard from both Dr. Goodlett and councilperson Witten about some excerpts from the planning commission meeting. There are also other opportunities to connect to Ashton Park subdivision, of which both Ashton Park developers and Creekwood homeowners did not want the connection to go through due to cut-through traffic potential from Shelton Road. So in 1992, exactly what Doc Goodlett said is correct, that you had, Mayor Dempsey is the one who flat-out said the HOA has to maintain this road. There were a lot of nuances. There's pages upon pages of minutes, and I can't quite climb inside the head of the 1992 Planning Commission that approved all of this, but they, but they did.
It's somewhat unusual, you'd say?
It is. There's also an unusual access easement through here. It is not for a public street. It is, in the event of emergency, there is, to Watercrest, an access easement that can get to the other side because, as Doc Goodlett spoke of also, there's a culvert there that could be dicey at times. And so there's always been, when Ashton Park came in, that was part of the deal, there's been an easement through there. Is it overly passable for our largest fire trucks? No, it is not. If we needed to get in there, could we? We could. It's just, yeah, that's the status of it today.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr., I have another comment. Our subdivision and both ours and the county's subdivision regulations require the improvement of the road for the road frontage of a subdivision, if I'm not mistaken. The frontage of this proposed development, you know, is the entire length of the road we're talking about. So one way or another, and I guess we'll get into this in the next agenda item, the developer has that responsibility, not the city. And that's not just to the entrance of the subdivision, it's the entire frontage of the subdivision. So again, if the HOA wants to contribute to the upgrade of this road, they certainly have the opportunity to do that directly with the developer. We do not need a third party, the city, with a city taxpayer funds involved in the upgrade of a private road or the repair of a private road that is under the developer's responsibility.
You know, anyone else?
I would like to say that, sort of fall in line with what Sunny has said, there's a unique history with this, with this road. I think it's a very unique situation that's different than what we see when we look around at similar situations in the City of Auburn. I feel like that warrants us treating it differently. And I think the solution that we've come up with is innovative, it's collaborative, and it fixes a longstanding issue that the citizens in Creekwood subdivision have been dealing with. So for that reason, I will support it.
You know, when people talk about precedent, I think what we have here tonight is we have a neighborhood raising their hand saying, we want to solve this problem, we're willing to put our own skin in the game. That's really unusual. Their life has been unusual as they have tried with $43,000 to fix this road and worry about this culvert every time we have a hard rain. I appreciate the fact that the people in Creekwood have done that on this private road. This is a very unusual situation, and I think, I believe it crawls for an unusual solution. And that's what we've tried to come up here tonight to give the council to consider. You've got a neighborhood that's in the City of Auburn that is kept from getting to a city street by a private road. That's very unusual. I don't know anywhere else that that happens in our community. It might, I'm sure it does. But this is a, as Tyler said, a very collaborative partnership to try to solve this problem once and for all, and there to be a city street that will be maintained by the city in the future, that all of these residents and their family and friends can access into the future, and they won't have to worry about the next big rain washing out the culvert. I appreciate where everybody's coming from, and I appreciate our staff and their recommendation, which was not to follow through with this. But it's my belief that for the residents out there, the future people who are visiting out there, that this is the right way to solve this problem that, as Ms. Witten has said, has been about, has existed for 30 years. So I'll be supporting this.
One additional comment? Please.
And I applaud the HOA for willing to put skin in the game, like you said, and there's absolutely nothing to prevent them from putting skin in the game. It just does not have to be in conjunction with city money, like a city no-interest loan. If they want to provide, put skin in the game, they can turn around and talk to the developer, and they can do that without city involvement.
I'm going to jump in and disagree, and I think it's also unfair to compare the situation, which has already been deemed a unique situation, to any other thing that may be happening within the city. This HOA is, this neighborhood, it's not just an HOA, it's a neighborhood, and these are our stakeholders. They also pay tax dollars to live in the city and to have access to the things, meaning a safe road. And the way, the reason why this is unique and it's shifted, and the reason why the city is stepping in, or should step in, in my opinion, is because we now have a development that is going to create the opportunity for a city-maintained street that will then connect to another city street. So this is creating connection, which we prefer to have in the city. It's creating health, safety, welfare. It's removing the liability off of the backs of homeowners, and it's also holding the developer responsible for a majority of the road, which is the flaglots of their development, is what they are developing, which we can get into in the next item. So it's really hard. I don't want the citizens to think that we're sitting here just throwing away taxpayer dollars. This has had a lot of consternation, a lot of thought and comments behind it, and a lot of work, and we don't do this lightly, and we're doing this to fix a problem and to solve a problem. And that is one of the reasons why I joined this council, was to be a problem solver, not a creator. And that's why I support the efforts of this proposal.
All right. Anyone else?
I have one more comment, too. It's important for me to make sure that the public knows that the staff of this city recommended that we not support this. And those of you who know my voting record, I will most generally support the decisions of our staff, and I think they made a wise decision on this call.
Bob? Okay. Anyone else? Would you recommend we do this by hand vote?
You're just saying, you know, there's no need for, I think you can just call for ayes and nays, and if we can't count that correctly, then we'll go to hand.
So we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right. So one abstention, then you had three nays.
And five.
And, yep.
Five yes.
Five, yes. Lindsey, did you record the nays? Okay. That motion carries. Item eight, E8 authorizes a development agreement with Herring Development LLC for the extension of Bridlewood Drive across the Rock House Farms development. The agreement would commit the city to contributing up to $165,000 toward the construction of approximately 1,050 feet of Bridlewood Drive. Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Max, you asked for this to be pulled off, so I'll turn it back over to you real quick.
Again, I'm abstaining from this vote.
Okay. Sure. Just to clarify, Megan, before we get into further discussion, 165 does include the 100 from the Creekwood, correct?
In essence, the city will be reimbursed over time from Creekwood, $20,000 initially, and then $8,000 a year for the next 10 years. So, but out of the gate, once billed, if this passes by Herring Development, we will owe up to 165 and then wait for up to $100,000 coming back from the subdivision.
Okay.
Could I ask a question on that?
Please, go ahead. We'll have time. Now's time for comments and questions.
And you said up to 165. Our portion of that would be 65, and it would be up to 65. And I think the actual number is...
But I have to say it is 165 only because that's what the agreement stipulates, because we had to take these two separately and not connect them legally, so that's why. But you're accurate in what you're saying, Councilman Mormon.
What do we anticipate, I guess, for that?
Well, we think it's, it could be as low as 132 or $32,000, and it could be as high as $65,000, and that is not reimbursed by anyone.
And the $100,000, just to be clear for those listening, is to be shouldered by the HOA?
Right. Again, shoulder by the HOA, and, you know, and again, I always have to advise the HOA very honorable people, but it is not secure, as in it is signed by the HOA president, but it is, you know, they are obligated, but, you know, only as far as an HOA could be obligated.
Right. And the final number, the 33,000, is the contingency.
Yeah, it is. It is. Difference between the developer had an estimate number, and our staff ran an estimate and felt it would be closer to 165. And so, I mean, we're hopeful it comes in at the 132 number, but we also wanted to build a contingency in there based on things that we saw, so the developer has worked with us to do that. And again, these development agreements, as previously stated, are on the agenda at the request of a majority of the council.
Any other comments, questions?
Just one more.
Please go ahead.
The two years, you say two years and five years and various periods of time here. Is there any teeth, if you will, to hold the developer to two years?
Mr. Cummings, do you want to respond to that, please?
In accordance with a development agreement, yes. I mean, they would have to build that, and I think it'd be in the best interest of their development to have that constructed at that time. The balance of that timeframe comes into more of, you know, dealing with our subdivision regulations and the requirements of, you know, putting final wearing surface down. The main objective is to get an improved road with the base down so that we, you know, that it can be driven on with a binder.
Yeah, a lot of you in English, let's engineer speak, that's the last one inch of asphalt that is, there's a little lip below the curb, and then our newer subdivisions are even in areas in which we do resurfacing. It drives our citizens a little crazy with that last layer. I think I got an email from one of you today with one of your constituents asking, where's the last bit? And so we... And so, we usually hold off. The city engineer and the public works director do not like to accept roads until we have driven a while on the base layer, because then the contractor, we've got some warranty periods and so on, and we want, if something's gonna fail, it needs to get fixed. This is commonplace. That's in the English, not engineering, part of this.
Sure, thank you. All right, any other comments, questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I guess I'm the only contrarian up here that just doesn't understand all of this. It says in here, "The developer shall maintain private access across its property and provide access to the Creekwood development." So, is this going to remain a private access road?
No, sir, that has to do with the period of time in which they must deal with the culvert and other parts of the road that, that we may need to cross the people who live in Creekwood through private property owned by the developer, but this will be a deeded right-of-way and owned by the city. But this is to allow ingress and egress across private property while some of the road work is being performed.
Okay. And then again, it says, "The city shall pay the developer $132,000." And later on, it says, "We could also contribute up to an additional $33,000." And anytime we have a document that says the city shall pay something, I get nervous, because this is not the city's responsibility to pay this. This is 100% the developer's responsibility. And again, if, if they want to work with this HOA, have at it. And I, like, I know we're gonna hear more arguments about how this is a win-win-win for the HOA, the developer and the city. It is not a win for the city. This is a win for the HOA, and it's a win for the developer. So, for some reason or another, the, you know, the developer has clear responsibilities to develop this road, not just to the flaglots, not just to their entrance, but develop the road that fronts this road. That's their responsibility. And why in the world we're having a city get involved in this in the first place? It just, it just drives, I don't understand. We've got a sweetheart deal here going, being offered, that we don't offer to other developers, and we're going to have this followed up by untold number of other developers that want similar deals, or people that come back to us and say, "Hey, well, how come I didn't get this 10 years ago," or whatever. So, I, I am adamantly opposed to this. I think it's just wrong in so many ways.
Okay, please go ahead, Ms. Witten.
Sure. The flaglots are the frontage of their development, and it ends prior to the east side of the culvert, based off of the plat that was presented, which leaves the, the balance of that road, which includes a culvert and the remainder of two Creekwood. My counterpart, Mr. Griswold, clearly is not in the business of helping people, because he thinks that this is us taking the burden off, and we're actually trying to solve a problem that was created by the city in 1992, and the minutes reflect that. And this is very separate from any other scenario that this body has seen in the tenure I've been on here, and I would imagine some of the staff that's here as well. And if another situation like this were to arise, I would think that you would see that we would try to tackle it in a way that we're tackling this scenario. So, to have a blanket statement that this is not our responsibility, when it's the city who created this scenario in 1992, I disagree with. And it's, I think the health, safety, welfare of our residents, regardless of how many and where, is our duty and responsibility, and I stand by that.
Who'd be next? Yes, Sonny?
I'd like to segue off that a little bit. If there was no subdivision to the west of Rock House Farms, where would the road stop?
If there was no subdivision, it's still on the...
If there was no Creekwood.
Well, really, it's a harder question to answer based on our major street plan requirements, and so, it depends on if there's a public street there, that this, this street is on the major street plan and therefore required to be connected. That is why the requirement was there and is part of our subdivision regulations, so it is, it has to tie the two together per our major street plan. Am I missing anything, Mr. Cummings?
Uh, correct.
And so, if this wasn't, if that wasn't there and there was no public street there, and the major street plan did not show a connection between the two, then they would only be building a certain distance to their entrance.
Thank, thank you very much.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Please, Bob. We'll, we'll come to you. Go ahead.
So, the, the, the entrance into the subdivision itself, is that going to remain a private road?
The, so, the entirety in this scenario of Bridlewood will become a public road as part of the subdivision requirement. It's never been in question about dedication right-of-way, but where you see the flags sticking up that appears to be the entrance to the subdivision, that is a private road. All those kind of dark lines that are very close together, that's their entrance, and that is a private road.
So, that's not, doesn't have anything to do with what we're talking about, correct?
Correct.
It's just Bridlewood joining the subdivision?
Correct, so, the flags sticking down have to be, I believe, at 70 feet in width at, at the Bridlewood right-of-way, is that correct, Mr. Howard? And so, they meet subdivision criteria of access to a public right-of-way by all of those different flags that stick down, but it's not truly a flaglot per our regulations, because it's meeting minimum lot width at street of 70 feet.
Okay, and this type, a, a subdivision development similar to this is regular, regularly comes, comes to our staff, correct? And the developer agrees to create the necessary road requirements of whatever subdivision? Is that reasonable to say?
I, I would just say that we just follow what's in our subdivision regulations, so whatever the subdivision regulations dictate is what staff requires, and those are adopted by the planning.
And that's what they require this time, and because of the reluctance of the developer, they recommend that we...
Well, it's still absolutely required, so nothing changes. This is a scenario where the council may or may not choose to step in and fund part of this, but it is still, it's required as part of the subdivision regulations, and nothing about these decisions changes that. Who's paying for it may change, but the requirement is the same.
And these lots are not affordable housing-type lots, correct?
These are large lot homes, and so, typically in large lots...
Do you have a price point?
I have no idea. No, we, we just look at this purely in terms of the, the acreage and it meeting our subdivision regulations.
Some of these lots are in excess of five and six acres, correct?
Yeah, they're, they're large lots.
So, we could assume large dwellings. We could assume, assume expensive homes, correct, into the millions of dollars?
I mean, I can speculate as to what the price point of those are, but they, typically on large lot development, you see decent-sized homes on, on acreage and, and price per square foot of dirt, and all of it is expensive.
And there would be 10 of them?
Eleven.
Eleven of them.
Eleven.
Thank you.
What is the density allowance for this acreage? Should the developer want to densify this greater?
Per the zoning right now, it's, you know, and, and we won't get into conservation subdivision, it's, it's right now one, one unit per three acres. However, the land use plan would allow up to, if they requested a rezoning and the council were to so deem it, up to four units an acre. And obviously, with this acreage, total acreage in 11 homes, it's far, far less dense than one unit per three acres.
Which is a less demand on our infrastructure requirements, and our infrastructure on the, on the long run. If this property were to be densified to its maximum land use, future land use availability, the impact along Shelton Road and on our city services and school system and what, you know, EMS could be, would be a lot greater.
Well, you have more homes, obviously begets more, you know, services.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I do...
We don't have any idea about the projected revenue from this development, do we?
No, I've not done a projection. We don't typically do that on residential development, so, no, I've not done that projection.
No, what, what kind of taxes it would bring in there?
Yeah, I mean, if, if it's somebody's home, said it's, you know, it's a 10% valuation of whatever value the tax assessor puts on it, 10% times 54 mils, so, you know, the higher the value of the home and property, the higher the property taxes. But, you know, if you make it denser, I don't know if that adjusts that number. It would depend on what the valuation of those homes are.
Thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
Okay, so, I, I guess I agree. I'm, I'm agreeing with Bob, because I'm looking at, and I, and I was about to ask the same question Bob asked, but I'm looking at the fact that staff, when we're talking about staff, we're talking about planning, they denied this, okay?
They just didn't see this.
Yeah, we'll just, to clarify one thing, if I may, Ms. Taylor, the, the council moved the development agreements forward. We were asked to create development agreements per our policy, because the city doesn't typically participate in such things, the council had to override that. You're the policymakers, and so, a majority decided, they, they asked us to put development agreements together. So, yeah, we didn't make a recommendation on whether or not you approve this. This is up to you, you're the policymakers. This is, you asked us to place this on the agenda, so we did.
Okay. And, but once again, we're talking about the, the health, as best can say, health, safety, and welfare for our citizens. So, I'm still gonna say that, you know, just picking and choosing and trying to make an excuse as to saying that, that the city made a mistake, that the city made a mistake back in 1992 or whenever the, the deal was. You know, so, either somebody didn't consider the safe, the health, safe, and welfare back then, and so, we are, we are actually saying that the city made a mistake. So, we're gonna, we're gonna approve something where I, basically, I see the city making mistakes all over Auburn.
Then bring them before the council.
You don't have the floor.
Okay. You don't either, then.
And, and actually, Beth, I'm not arguing about it, so we're not gonna create an argument here. I'm stating my opinion as well as you state yours.
Sure, please continue, you're good.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm just saying that I don't think that we should pick and choose develop, who should develop, that we should pay roads for certain parts of the city for, for certain developers that we shouldn't for other developers. And I, and, and, you know, that's my opinion, and, and I'm entitled to my opinion.
Mayor, ma'am?
Please.
City manager, have we had other scenarios like this come before this body?
No, quite like, quite like this one, no. I mean, there's difference. We have a, a product, a program called Special Road Financing. Kerry Creek Parkway section of that was built, the city issued debt for the road to be built. The developer was on the hook for a full repayment and all fees for staff time, interest, and everything else. Watercrest Boulevard was built that way, North Dean Road was built that way, where the city participated in some things, but that's different. The developers were ultimately on the hook with letters of credit for 100% of the financing piece, except for extra lanes or items that the city wanted.
And if a council member had a, a scenario in which they felt this was comparable to, and they wanted to bring it before this body, they're allowed to.
You're the policymakers, and the majority of you want to do something, and unless it's illegal, you can do it.
Thank you.
Okay, and, and I'm just gonna say this. There was a situation when I first got on the council, okay? Dr. Coop met with me and, and the mayor, Ron, and he was trying to build some affordable houses, houses over on Zellers, and he was asking that the city paid for, it was gonna be private, it was private, 'cause he was buying the land. So, he, he asked that the city provide the code to say, would they do it? My understanding, I never got an answer about whether that happened or not, but my understanding that did not happen because it was a private property. So, he, he wasn't able to build those houses. It, it was gonna offset some of the costs of him building those houses. So, it has, I don't know if it became in front of the council, but it did come to me, and it came to the mayor.
Was that brought before this council?
No.
No, it was not brought before the council. Ultimately, the criteria that the staff set forward, this project did not qualify for the criteria to, for the city to step in and build the street. The homes were too expensive per the income levels of which we were targeting for affordable housing at the time. In fairness, though, there was no official action. The discussion was back and forth, and there was never such a project that moved forward with a formal request to the council, because staff was looking at affordable housing at a lower price point than these homes were intended at the time to be offered, but there was never a formal action of the council, and not truly a formal action of the staff. In our discussions, that was the, the pain point that never got corrected. And so, the, the goal of an affordable housing program where the city would invest in infrastructure is to make people of lower incomes homeowners at a certain price point. And so, we have never been able to work with a developer any time in recent memory who wants to price homes in the price point in which the staff would like to see to make them the most affordable. A developer is certainly welcome to price homes wherever they want, but to qualify for an affordable housing program, we're following federal income limits and certain ranges, and that is why we didn't proceed recommending that to you. However, in that scenario, if a council member had wished to escalate that and said, "I don't agree with the staff, and this is what they're telling somebody. If five of you tell me we want to do this, or we want to put it on agenda to consider it, then we'll draw up something that does that." But we're, we're just in the business of recommending you make the policy.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment or a question? Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Despite the, the insulting words from my colleague here, I, I do have interest in problem-solving, but I'm interested in solving problems for the city, not for a select few. And the hypothetical about density, anyone who has talked to the developers, which we all have had an opportunity to do that, knows that expanding the density of this thing is, is not even remotely being considered. And as far as revenue goes, we're gonna have the revenue from 10 or 11 multimillion-dollar properties regardless, so I don't think that's really a consideration either. So, anyway, again, I, I think this is just wrong in so many ways that we are cherry-picking who we're gonna help, and I think it's wrong.
Can I say one more thing?
Please.
You can't state that we are cherry-picking when this is the first time this has come before this body in this capacity. And if other council members have a scenario or a problem that needs to be solved, and it's outside the, the perceived regulations and recommendations, then gladly bring it before this body to be considered. So, to say this is being cherry-picked is incorrect, and I'm not gonna sit here and allow those words to be say it, said, when that's not the facts.
You know, the people who are building this neighborhood are carrying about 70 or 80% of the cost of these road improvements, which includes turn lanes in and out of this neighborhood onto Shelton Road, which is dangerous. It's gonna benefit a lot of people. The neighborhood that is in the city, but has not been able to get to a city street other than on a private road, is willing to participate financially in solving this. And the city is being asked to consider the final payment of this, which is, our staff believes is $32,000, could be up to 65. This is the first time since I've been on the city council and been the mayor that we've had a scenario like this brought forward. I would hope that if a strange, unusual situation, that there seemed to be a difficult time reaching a, a positive ending, would be provided to the city council, and a city council person thought that we could be helpful in solving this problem, that they would bring it to this council, and the council would willingly consider, "Is this something we want to do?" I would hope we would all do that, no matter which nine of us would want to bring that forward, that we'd be willing to do this. This is, in my opinion, again, it's an unusual situation that needed an unusual solution, and we try to create something for the council to consider.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I certainly appreciate the work that you've done, and the, the, the effort that you and councilperson Witten have definitely made in good faith, and I understand what you're saying, council pro tem, Witten, I really do, I sympathize with that. But at the end of the day, I draw on my blue-collar roots, I guess, on this. It's just, it's difficult for me to be comfortable with a, a situation where, where my concern is around the precedent that we're setting, and... the precedent that we're setting. And I, I just think that we have regulations in place that account for this, and it puts us in a unnecessarily awkward position to be, to be in disagreement over this. I just, at the end of the day, I just don't think it's a good look, and I can't support it for that.
Understand. Thank you, Bob.
Bob, I appreciate those comments as well. And going into this, I actually shared some of the same concerns about precedent that you had mentioned and Kelly had mentioned as well. But, you know, how I, how I came to my decision was looking at, looking at this situation in its totality, looking at the history of it. At the end of the day, I, I came to the conclusion that this is, as Ron has put it, this is a unique situation, which, which warrants a, a unique solution. And that's, that's why I'll be voting in favor of it.
Okay. All right, we'll move forward. We'll do a voice vote, and if we need to do a hand, hand, raise hands, we'll do that as well. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, I know we got one abstention.
One abstention is about five ayes and three nays.
Okay.
Motion carries. And Lindsay, we did have a motion on that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure. It's been a long discussion, so just making sure.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
Some oohd.
All right, have a motion. Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is approved. Ordinances?
Item 9A amends the biennial budget ordinance 3387 that was adopted on July 5, 2022 to account for events and changes that have occurred since the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget was adopted. This process is also known as a mid-biennial budget. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Have a motion. Second, anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Okay, seeing here, none of the, any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a proposed amendment that I have provided to Lindsay and to the city manager, in that I propose that the, in the draft ordinance 3387, be amended to delete paragraph 15 on page six of six. The paragraph reads that the spending authority of the city manager shall be established to match that of the competitive law, excuse me, competitive bid law threshold.
I have a copy of that, if anybody would like to see it.
Yes, so this is the first time we have seen this. Ms. Crouch, I want to make sure this is managed and handled the right way. So is that, would we assume that's a motion right there for an amendment?
Yeah, you made a motion, you need a second before you can do anything else.
All right, and I'm passing this out if people, if the council wants to wait and read this before, but I do need a second, or I don't need a second, whatever the council wishes.
Second.
All right, do I have, I have a motion and a second. Now, discussion, Ms. Crouch, on this?
Yeah.
Okay, discussion on this. Mr. Griswold, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. I'm not really sure why this wound up in here as increasing the authority of the city manager. You know, the city council has authority over the budget. We have very little insight into the budget, other than a, you know, very top level. And I certainly have no problem looking at each and every item on the budget, if that's what it takes. But increasing that beyond what we already have, I think is, is not necessary. I'm more than happy to, to consider any review of contracts. But it just seems to me that we're giving up what miniscule authority we already have on budget execution.
The current authority is $15,000?
Current authority per the financial policy is $15,000, yes.
And why, why was it established at $15,000?
That was matching the competitive bid law as established in state law at the time. So what happens when you adopt a budget is the departments, as you see four agenda items on the consent agenda tonight, that, that would follow, the new competitive bid law threshold is $30,000. So most of those items, one was increasing pest control costs by $784, one was about, two were about software contracts, and one was about dealing with a graduate fellow program at Auburn University. Those are things that are already encountered, they're in the budget, they're within departmental budgets, and they are routine operation matters of the city. With current inflation and so on, it allows me to continue to operate the city without coming to you with four things extra on the consent agenda. The council certainly does not have to pursue this, but this is something where we've tracked this for years. As we discussed during our mid-biennial budget workshop, I, I placed it here instead of in a financial policy, most of you likely haven't seen, because I wanted you to have direct awareness of it. It is here so that every time the council deals with something with the budget, it is right there in front of you in the budget ordinance, so you're very clear on where it is. So this is my attempt to be very transparent about what that number is and the why.
And again, the city of Auburn, this is what we have done historically.
Correct.
Is that correct?
And it used to be $10,000 before the state raised it.
It was $7,500 in 1994, but it's always followed, that competitive bid law amount.
That changed, the legislature changed that, legislature changed that to 30,000 this, kind of last year.
That's correct. Don't confuse that, though, with the public works bid law, which is a, a higher number. That's $100,000. This is just tying spending authority without it coming before this body to 30. In essence, that's where it stands today, and it's tying it. There is a potential, and it was in your budget slides, that in 2027, the competitive bid limit could be adjusted to match the consumer price index, and could similarly be adjusted every three years per the new law that was passed. So that's why we tied it there.
In this case, it doubled from 15 to 30. It seems like a substantial.
Right, because it's following what state law says.
But when's the last time that competitive bid law was changed prior to this?
In 2008 is when it went to 15,000, which was double what it was in 94. It was 7,500. So it has, it has not always doubled, but just depending on the circumstances of inflation and those kind of things.
So the new law is built in to adjust for inflation possibly in 2000, starting in 2027?
Yeah, based on the CPI, yeah. And who knows if it gets changed between now and 2027?
This isn't directly tied to that, so we don't have to increase the city manager's spending limit, just based on the competitive bid law in the future necessarily.
No, you don't have to at all. This is to just give flexibility with, with inflation and so on. In the daily operations of the city, I had someone ask today, well, how many contracts do you sign? I probably sign 10 to 15 contracts a day. My staff will tell you, sometimes they get on me because they need some stuff done. It's everything down to the guitarist at the city market for $125, and on up, because staff technically doesn't have the authority to sign any contract. And so I've signed a lot of contracts on a daily basis, and, and most of these things in this price range these days are very operational for the city. They are not policymaking. You know, you're, you have broad policy authority and big pi, big picture items. I'm running the day-to-day operations of the city, and the only goal of this is probably in the 10 to 15 hour range of staff time went into those four agenda items alone, if you talk about the number of staff members it touches. So we're trying to be efficient. But at the end of the day, that's up to you. The ask, it's been a long time coming for the ask, and we actually waited for the state to change the competitive bid law, because it's been tied since 1994 to that, and that's why I haven't asked prior. It's something we've discussed off and on, but that's why I haven't asked prior.
Do we know what's, what's typical? City manager, other cities, do they match competitive bid law in other cities that are similar size, or do we know the answer?
I do not know the answer to that.
I, I certainly support it. I think it, it, like you spoke, to the efficiency of running the city. We got a proposed budget. There's nothing that comes before us that's not in the budget. There's nothing that you're gonna approve outside that that's not in the budget.
I would also like to remain employed, so, you know, there is a, if something gets uncomfortable, you know, there are things that come to you guys, and I've even had staff ask tonight, like the Cook's Pest Control item, why wouldn't we're adjusting by $754? Do we have to come before you? It's not just the total dollar amount, it's something that we actually vet every one of these with our city attorneys before they end up on your agenda. So sometimes something else triggers it, whatever it is. So, yeah, there's a lot of behind the scenes work that goes into that.
Would this make your life any better, any simpler?
Like, on this particular agenda, it would have been four less agenda items we're, we're putting together and reviewing that go through multiple people, yes.
But you still have to sign a contract.
Correct. And I can grant that authority to others, which the executive directors will get some of that, but they will have spending limits. This is, people know this about me, every contract that comes before me, I read it. Even if it's been through the city attorneys and multiple people, every expense I sign, I read the whole thing, and, and they will all nod at you. They've all gotten a phone call from me they didn't want to get. It says, what is this? And why is it in here? So there's a lot of, I take my fiduciary responsibilities very seriously, and in government, you better, or not only will you not be employed, you might, you might be behind bars. So therefore, I'm very serious about this, and this is, this is to operate the city, not, not to overstep my bounds.
Any other comments?
Well, I work with contracts every day, and so I, I understand, believe me. And to have to sit down and read these contracts, that's a lot. So, Ashley Keller, I, I just ain't got a problem with this one.
All right. Megan, I appreciate the work you do, and, and I trust you. I appreciate the effort that was put into this budget, and I appreciate the information that's provided to the council, and I appreciate the fact that we're all allowed to ask any question we want to of our staff, from the most minute expense to the largest expense. We have that right and the ability to ask that of you. We are simply following what we have done as a city. I believe that this helps us. If it helps you, it helps us. And, and I know firsthand what a grinder you are, and I appreciate that about you. So I will, I will not vote for this amendment. Okay, so if we're all through.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say I appreciate Councilman Griswold's attention to detail. I always get a lot of comfort knowing that you're putting eyes on each packet. So thanks for your work. I.
I appreciate you saying that, Bob.
I gotta say, you know, I'm, I'm very comfortable with, with this piece in place, but I certainly, I certainly like the discussion.
Great thing about democracy, we all bring something to the table into these meetings, and we all have the ability to speak to it. So that's a good thing. All right, how do we need to handle this from a vote?
You've got to vote on the amendment, and you can just vote, voice vote on it.
Okay, all right. So all in favor of this amendment, okay? So you'd be supporting this amendment. All in favor of this amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed to this amendment, please say nay.
Nay.
I, I didn't vote, but I meant to. Can I vote aye?
How would you handle that?
It's at the pleasure of you guys, that's fine.
You gonna vote aye?
Aye.
I'll say, that'd be two ayes then.
Two ayes and seven nays.
Two ayes and seven nays. You got that?
So the amendment did not carry, mayor. So you're back to just, to the original ordinance.
We're back to the amended FY 2023, FY 2024 biennial budget. Do I have any comments or questions on that?
I'd like to make one.
Sure.
Possibly to redeem my previous vote.
You're good.
And this, this is a comment about the entire budgeting process, not a specific proposed amendment or anything. But one of the reasons I ran for office is, was to find out how things work in city government. And I was very, I am very pleasantly surprised at how conservatively the budget is developed in its estimation of revenue and expenses. The council doesn't develop the budget. The credit for that goes to the city staff. We do approve the budget, and we do vote on big ticket items as they are proposed throughout the year. Even the big ticket items and projects that are budgeted for have to be individually approved before they can be procured or initiated. It's, and so although any process can be approved on, our budget process seems to work. And I just wanted to say that as a, as my first blush impressions of this whole budget process. We do have the ability to vote down any, any item really, but certainly any big ticket item or project. So it's, it's not a line item veto, but it is, it is quite something. But we don't bill the budget, as I have come to understand.
That's correct. In a manager council form of government, the city manager builds the budget along with their team. In a mayor council form of government, such as Opelika, the mayor builds the budget along with their team, and presents it to the council just the same.
Anyone else have a comment or question? Last summer, six of us went through a budgeting process. We approved a two-year budget. There were multiple budget hearings. I think there was at least two of those. We had a notebook that was about four times as thick as this one right here. Our department heads stood in front of us and made proposals, presentations to us about where they felt like their priorities are. And we had a long time, I don't know, two weeks or a month, to consider this before we approved it. And so this year, what we're coming to do is look at what the reality of the last 12 months has been. How does that change what we want to do? What are opportunities for us in the future? And that's what we've met on. So the next 12 months, we can do the very, the very best job with the very best of Auburn. I want, I just want you to know, I'm very impressed with the people who put together the money that you provide this city to spend on your behalf. They really work at it really hard. And they try to listen to you, and they try to listen to us, and they try to bring the best ideas forward. And I'm very grateful for their efforts. All right. If everybody's ready to go, we'll have a voice vote at this time.
No roll call.
Roll call, excuse me.
Taylor?
We've, we vote no. We're still on nay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we're voting on it now.
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Hoblins?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Yes.
Under resolutions, item 10A authorizes a contract amendment with Say-Say and Litchfield Architects for the Public Safety Training Center Phase II project in the amount of $61,314, bringing the total contract amount to $259,314. Those are all based on cost of, fees for cost of construction. And then this is, to remind you, this is the Public Safety Training Center project. You've already approved, but now that you've approved the bid, we need to correct the architects' fees.
For approval. All right, got a motion. Second, any comments or questions from the council? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the citizens' open forum. If you'd like to address city council, you can come forward and give us, please give your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes. We ask that all of your comments be directed towards council members, and that they do not, you do not use the name of anybody that works here at the city in a negative way. Okay? All right, who would like to be first? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Letitia Smith. I reside at 2262 Heritage Ridge Lane in Auburn, and I am the current president of the Lee County Branch 5038 of the NAACP.
Congratulations on your recent recognition.
Thank you so much. As always, thank you for the opportunity to come before you. Today, I am here on behalf of the Auburn residents who reside in Webster's Crossing Mobile Home Park, which is located at 425 Webster Road in Auburn. Some are here with me today, many are not, and several said that they did not feel comfortable coming in fear of retaliation. Outside of this meeting, I have spoken with at least 13 different individuals who were comfortable enough to at least think that maybe somebody would listen to them and help be their voice. So just a little background. Back in June, we did reach out to Ms. Derby, who is one of the owners of Webster Crossing, and we informed her that the NAACP had received a complaint of discrimination against her, as well as their property manager at the time. That's kind of off the table now, because that complaintee has filed their own lawsuit, and we were no longer involved. However, we did make sure that we shared with the attorneys in all transparency that although they categorically denied any type of violations of the Alabama Uniform Tenant Act, we told them that we had received several complaints. We told them that they maintained, primarily they were in the area of failure to consistently maintain property in safe, clean, and sanitary conditions, as well as the failure to address repairs in a timely manner. And we also heard things about overcharging and duplication of charging of rental fees. We heard about inconsistency of applying rules. We heard about being charged larger security deposits for different tenants. We heard about all these increases. larger security deposits for different tenants. We heard about all these increases in charges for things that were just sickening, just to hear about. And so what we are asking you today is to help us. We heard things about the ambulance and other service vehicles could not get through or have slowed down their response time because of the roads, and that the school buses did not even want to come down there and were making the students come up to the top of the hill. So I don't know all the facts, but we are here to really ask you to work with Connie Taylor to make sure that the Ward One residents feel that this is a good place to live. Yes, they live in Webster Crossing, yes, it's privately owned, but guess what? That community is part of Auburn, and we want to make them feel special. I would have said before this meeting that you have no jurisdiction. I was just reaching out to ask you to help, but I have learned that there is some jurisdiction, and you have some special road financing. And I want you to be just as innovative, creative, collaborative, and want to provide an unused solution for this unused circumstance for the Webster Crossing tenants as well.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Hold on just one second, ma'am. Hold on just one second. Hold on just one-
Thank, Mayor, if, if I may, I've received an update this afternoon in terms of a number of issues that are private matters, and Ms. Smith really outlined a number of issues going on at the park. But in terms of the city's involvement, the Auburn Police Department is working with the owners of the park to address criminal conduct first reported by the owners. The former manager has been arrested, and this item will be pursued further. So there are a lot of legal issues relative between the tenants privately and potential criminal actions having to do with the managers. So one of the things that we do want to encourage is, Auburn Police Department detectives have talked to some of the residents and may need to be talking to more who may have reported improprieties of whatever sort that is. And if you haven't talked to Auburn Police Department and you have something you need to tell them, or you think that we need to be aware of, you can contact a non emergency number at 501-3100 and ask for the detectives, or their direct line will is, 501-3130?
Correct.
To Auburn Police Department detectives, because this is something that I was just made aware of before the start of the meeting. One other thing in terms of maintenance of roads, just, we want to hear what everybody has to say, but we do have limited authority on private property, and this is not an identical situation to Bridlewood in terms of, this isn't property that anybody's giving to the city in order to build a public road, nor are they subdivided. There's a lot of legal complications. But all that to say, from a health, safety, welfare standpoint, which we did talk about earlier, our inspection services team, which is our building inspectors, do go out and have been, and in my tenure in this seat for two and a half years, we've been working with the owners and managers, and obviously there is now probably an issue relative to managers. The owners have been responsive. Our inspection services director, John Hor, where did John go? John can speak to that, but we have been checking regularly to potholes and other things to get them filled in, and drainage issues, and giving them certain timeframes. We can't force somebody to do it overnight, but we can certainly stay on it. And John, we have been working for the last several months on this, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Just to add to that-
That we can do, yep.
I understood this afternoon that Ms. Smith and some of the neighbors might be coming tonight, and so I communicated with Mr. Darby, who was out of the country, but he did respond with a text, and he did say basically in the text that the, the work on the roads was imminent, and that they were planning on getting something done about that immediately. He referred to some of these other law enforcement issues that I have shared with the city manager to take care of and to, and to communicate to y'all tonight.
Absolutely, but all that to say-
I hope I talk to him later on this week, but he is out of the country.
Yeah, and all of that was just to get the information out there. Please continue approaching council.
Yes, ma'am. You're next. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Yolanda Rao. I am a resident of Webster Crossing lot 935, and I have illegal eviction. I have pictures of where they have dug up, he said, well, Mr. Dorby accused me of causing a major water leak in his park, and something I, which I could not have done that six feet deep. He said, "I called a major water leak," and I told him I didn't do anything. So he evicted me for a six-feet-deep hole, he said, I caused. And I went around the park and took pictures of every hole that he done dug up in the park. But I'm evicted for the hole that's in front of my house that I had anything to do with. So, and I have pictures of all the holes in the park that he have dug up that they just covered up last week. And I have a no trespassing pass, no trespassing sign in front of my house. How do I supposed to get in and out of my door with a no trespassing sign right in front of my house? I have pictures of everything. And then he says, "It's illegal, it's illegally." He's really illegally evicting me. I have child. I have been in this park over 20-some years. He never had a problem out of me. He got all these potholes in this, in this park, but you want to evict me for something I have not even done. I have no control of. That's how bad this park is. I don't have 5,000 to jump up and move my park. All these parts are just about closed. Mr. Darby has served me an illegal eviction, and I can show you the pictures, Mr. Mayor, of all these holes they have dug up. I have witnesses. They all know, but why you want to evict me for something I have no control of? I, can I show it to you?
I'm gonna ask that you share those with the city manager. Is that a possibility? Of course, you have a minute and 18 seconds to keep talking to us.
Yes, baby. I've been there over 20-some years. My husband died in that park. I didn't do that, sir. I have illegal eviction, where he got holes, six feet deep in front of my house with a no press, no trespassing sign across my yard that still is there. And then I took pictures of all the other water leaks in this park that he's not trying to evict no one about. I got pictures of all of.
Why don't you show them to me after the meetings are over? Is that okay?
Yes, sir. I went around the whole park.
Sure, I understand. Okay.
And, and let me just say this. I was actually in Webster Crossing yesterday. Oh, was that yesterday? Yeah, yesterday. And what she's saying is correct, because the resident that I was at, there's a, there's a, also a, a deep hole that I know the resident couldn't have did. It had to, you know, be some type of equipment to dig these holes and stuff. And it, it's, it's really just sad to, for some of the things that, that the owner, even though he, he may, and, and I hear, hear you, a mayor, that you have talked with him, but-
Well, text. It was a text.
Okay. Well, you, y'all have texted in this type of stuff. This is an ongoing problem. Okay? This, this is not just started. This has started, I know, probably about the last 20 years.
It's not the first time I've talked to him.
Yeah, yeah. And, and we, we actually had a meeting at Boykin, the mayor and I, and some of the residents there, about the potholes and stuff. He did, they, they patched up some holes, but the type of job I do, I already know patching don't work. Okay? When you got vehicles going in and out, in and out, in and out, that, that's just not gonna work. It's just a temporary solution. It's got to be a real solution, because people are actually tearing up their cars. I mean, it, it's ridiculous. I got several friends in Webster Crossing, and I, that I visit often, and some of my friends, they park all the way at the end of the street just to go to somebody else's house around the street, because nobody want to tear up their car, but they want to visit. They want to, you know, visit one another. So, you know, and, and I actually, this young lady that just stood up, she, she actually had a conversation with me, and I wanted her to come tonight and, you know, express her concerns to, to let, let the people know. And I hope that wherever he's at, he's listening, because it's, it's just sad that people have to live in those conditions. Like she said, it's putting people in hardship. You evict people from the trailer park simply because some of these people, I had a, I had a ward meeting two Monday nights ago. There was probably just this many people at my ward meeting from that trailer park, okay? And they was Hispanics, and the only people live down there are Hispanics and blacks. So you, 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 there's Avalon and, and Webster Crossing, and I can't think of the name of the other park.
Gentilly.
Gentilly, and, and it's another park down through there. And I, and I actually rode those roads, and they's, and I think they're private owned too. But they actually keeping up. I mean, this man should have some type of responsibility to the, to the people who's actually paying him rent. And apparently Avalon does, Gentilly does, they keep up their roads. They look nice down through there. So I, what's the difference? I, I, you know, it's sad. And, and I, and I would ask that each council member, if you have not rode through Webster Crossing, please go and see for yourself. They're not making up stuff. It's, it's actually like that. So, and it's sad. And, and you know, this is supposed to be, what, Auburn is the beautiful plain or something, some slogan? What is it? Lo- loveliest plain on the village, or whatever it is. Not Webster Crossing. It does not fit into that description.
Who be next? Ms. Bradshaw?
Ms. Berry, excuse me. Will you forgive me? Yes, there I will. God bless you. My name is Christine Berry. I have property at 721 a half North Gate Street of Auburn. Also, I do have family friends that live there at Webster Crossing. I'm not gonna repeat what everybody else said, but I will repeat that I heard the empathy from Ms. Beth Witten saying that you have, you care, and you have passion in the safety for the people and for the citizen. So I'm just hoping that you will have the same passion toward Webster Crossing, as well as Mr. Mormon, you make the statement about adequate and improving the road. So please have the same passion. The Bible said, "Come now, let us reason together." So let us reason together and work cohesively and collected together and make a difference, because we all is one big family right here in Auburn. So let's do it for Webster Crossing. Let's stay together. It's unity and strength, and we are stronger together. May God bless you, and may God keep you. Let's do it for Webster Crossing. And we thank you, Ms. Taylor, for doing such a wonderful and profound job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Who be next?
Good evening. I'm Mary Moore. I'm a resident at 425 Webster Road, lot number 947, Auburn here. I come because I've been here before, and I think you'd just like to hear me speak. But anyway, I speak on behalf of the residents there at Webster Crossing. I'm grandfathered in that. I raised my son starting at Holiday Mobile State. And when the Jenkins bought it, they bought it and moved down to Webster after selling out at Holiday. But anyway, started out to be a very good community. And so the community changed over from good to this song, this song that goes, "What is this?" That makes me wonder why. I concur with the resident Yolanda Rao, and what they've done to her and what they've done to many down there. I know you've told me that the city council can't do anything that much about private property, but compassion. If you share compassion to the owner, Mr. Darby, and I've spoken with Mr. Darby. The former mayor, Bill Ham, I was appointed as a liaison for the community, never met with him anymore. That could have been a problem solved right today. Thank you, Ms. McGowan, for getting back with me with the question I had to you about the water, found out what it was really all about. It's a fee that they've tacked on everything else this, this whole year. We've been tacked on $136 through the total, people through there are low-income families, including me. I'm retired. I'm low, 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 low. But anyway, so I, I sympathize with her because that's not her problem. She didn't do that. They dug that. Right, and I don't know what the city can do about that? Or is it anything that can be done back then? And I know you've spoken with him. I understand that. We met and, and shared that with him. But what can we do to make him realize that we're people too, that we need that, that living, that well living, because that's all we can do right now? I feel proper about saying so that the, the managers that have been there at Holiday, I mean, at Webster, have just changed over tremendously, and have changed rules and regulation. You paying for a fence that been put up, and people's charged $480, and the fence not working. It's gone. So nothing that they'll do about it. But I just ask that you be compassionate enough to speak with them again, Mayor Anders. And again, I am the mother that he had hid back a long time ago.
Thank you, Mayor. Who be next?
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Thomas, and I too am a resident of Webster Crossing. And I live at lot 1042. I've been in Webster Crossing for over 20 years. And ever since I've been living there, the road conditions have been the same. They are getting worse. They are worse. So I feel that with the rent and stuff that they charge us, and then they go up whenever they feel like that they should be made to fix these roads. And we have gates that's been put up that haven't been working right since they put it up. So I just feel like they should be held responsible for the conditions of the roads and things that are going on in Webster Crossing. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Who be next?
I've done Robert Wilkins 261 Dentson Drive. I've got a speech made up, but I'm not gonna give it after listening to all this. I, I've done over 12,000 deliveries in the last three and a half years here for Uber Eats and Point Pickup. I go to Webster Crossing. I have to go at night sometimes. It's eight, or nine, or 10 o'clock, making a delivery. And I'm gonna tell you, I dread it, because I don't know if I'm gonna be able to figure out where all the holes are, because it's so difficult to see. And I, I think it's horrible that y'all have such a terrible place to have to go every day. I can't imagine. I don't have any choice when I get a delivery, because I don't know where it's gonna be at. They give me a, a little map to kind of give me an idea, but Webster Crossing is horrible. And Gentilly and the other one across the street, Kirkwood or whatever, both of them have just had theirs recently done. Nice paved all the way up, real wide areas. There is huge holes. I mean, huge holes. I, I believe some of it would just about swallow up a car if you hit it right. So I, I think it's pretty horrible. And, you know, there, there are some other, I, I've been to all of the new developments. I've been to all the old developments. Opelika has a few like this area does, okay? So Auburn's not the only area that has that. There's one that's where Goodwill is, just beyond there. You, you go through behind that trailer area, you go through there, it's pretty bad. It's not as bad as that, but it's, it's bad. And, and I see nothing wrong. I know that some of y'all's goal is, as a city, is to get rid of a lot of trailer parks. I just think the quality should be there, because there's a need for trailer parks. There's a need for different housing, because when you get to the housing too high, then they can't afford it. So I believe that it's important that you be careful on how many trailer parks you get rid of when you hear such horrible thing that Webster Crossing is doing. The gentleman that owns that should be ashamed. And I, I've lived in the country. I've lived where I've had tractors and had big holes and stuff. They're no bigger than this. And, you know, I've had bulldozers. I've, I've seen a bulldozer actually disappear in the mud in about five to six seconds. So I understand about holes and so forth, but this is embarrassing. And I, I will have to give you my speech next week, so I'll upset all of you next week. But this week, you know, when I get emotions, especially a couple of the people that got really emotional, I think it's important that we share our feelings when we're abused, because we have rights as citizens, and those citizens have rights. And I realize there's a lot of legal things that the city can't do. I mean, I've, I've dealt with a lot of businesses and stuff, and, and I know what you can do and not do. But there's some things you can, you can kind of encourage and so forth. So I, I appreciate everything about y'all today. Thank you.
Thank you. Who be next? Okay. This time we'll close the citizen communications. Anything from the council? I appreciate everybody, what you had to say. And we will certainly do our part to try to understand the role of the city through all this. And I hear your frustration. And I hear your frustration, and some of you, I hear your desperation, and I get it. We should all be fortunate to have a place to lay our heads each night. So I understand, and thank you, Ms. Smith, for coming tonight, okay? All right, is there a move to adjourn?
No move.
All right, we are adjourned.